Then.
Twice, there we go. All right. Right, I'll call the order, the town of Mount Desert Planning Board Workshop for December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Welcome aboard.
Santa's.
Santa's workshop. All right, uh, let's see, board, let's start off with some introductions. So, board members present tonight and myself, Chair William Hanley. We've got Vice Chair Tracy Loftus Keller, we've got Meredith Randolph, and we've got, um, Gail Marshall and Alan Kimerly with us tonight, and Kathy, it looks like it's just you online. Welcome aboard again. And, uh, let's see, tonight, you know, it's a workshop and we're jumping right to item two on the agenda, and first thing we're looking at tonight is, uh, the subdivision ordinance review and discussion. And Noel, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and if anyone would care for a Christmas cookie.
Please come and eat one.
Help yourself. Meredith, Tracy.
I have one more.
All right. Alan.
I'm just sorry, multiple.
You're on, Noel.
All right, well, welcome, thank you. Uh, one of the things that we were going to be working on this year was, um, updating the town's subdivision ordinance, which, as we discussed a few times, hasn't been updated in quite a while. Uh, I think that, uh, we've got obviously some very recent experience going through a subdivision, so now's a great time to dive in to the subdivision ordinance. Um, I think, when you think about subdivision ordinance, there's a few ways to try to tackle it. One is, um, you know, go in and do a couple of tweaks to the existing ordinance. Another is to do a straight up repeal and replace, and then the third option is really to do a substantive rewrite of the existing ordinance. So, but the draft that has been circulated is more of a repeal and replace than a, you know, targeted edit, and, um, even more than just a, um, you know, substantive edit to the, to the existing structure. So I think the first thing we kind of need to talk about is, um, if that makes sense, have you had a chance to look at it and how bad is the existing ordinance that we really just want to strike it and start over again? And in doing so, at least in the draft that I've prepared, trying to take as many elements that are good from the existing ordinance and put them into a new structure. So, that's a good starting point for the discussion. Um, and I can kind of go down through like what you might could start there, or I could just kind of go down through how this one's laid out, get a reference to it, and still look at it, but.
I'm all for kicking the current ordinance out the door and completely replacing it, and you know, I think we've definitely parsed the current ordinance and exacting detail recently. So, and, and there's so much, you know, and so many different areas, I mean, we stumbled through. You know, I, I think the, the scale of those challenges would cast my boat towards repeal and replace.
Any else?
I only have experience with one subdivision ruling, so, so let's have a look at a different option.
Yeah, I, I just, uh, just to be fair, uh, should mean, I have talked to Andy, who called me like five minutes before. Um, I go out of my office, but, uh, you know, I think we just need to be careful. When you do a repeal and replace, which I actually think is the better approach for this one, which is the reason why I have a draft in front of me that's this way, but, uh, we just all collectively want to be very careful that there's some uh, cumulative knowledge that was integrated into the existing draft that we want to make that was unique to this town, that we definitely want to try to make sure we don't lose. And that in doing the repeal and replace, there's a bigger risk to lose that. Uh, stuff. So like, for example, uh, one element that I haven't added into the draft is the provision for developmental subdivisions. That's something that we want to make sure we keep. Um, and I think when we get to the discussion point about the new, um, say new workforce housing provisions, then there may be some elements from our recent workforce housing discussion that we want to try to make sure we capture in this draft that I probably didn't capture because I used a different model. Things like that, you just want, you know, make sure we're, we're doing, but it seems to me, you know, observationally that there's a kind of like a funky process in the existing ordinance, and then there's, um, it's not clear, you know, just to try to clarify the, here's the submission requirements for different stages of the ordinance, and then here's the different standards, so updating the, some, the review standards to be consistent with state subdivision rules and then, um, other things that you might want to do. So, I just preface all that by saying, we do now want to be careful that we make sure we don't forget to add some of that unique stuff back into this draft. So let's take our time and do it right so that it doesn't like totally get even more messed up. That's my, my thing. Yeah.
Um, I don't think this would make your job easier, but I, I look at an ordinance like this and say, what are all the things that we're trying to accomplish? And go to the purposes, and that's got the not the convenience safety, all the water, the town on desert, and I can think of another aspect of requirements for projects like this that I don't necessarily see in evidence here, but I think it, it responds to the issue of our time, which is climate change, and I don't see anything in here that addresses subjects of sustainability, subjects of the integrity of the building envelopes, um, uh, land usage and how that pertains to the health of the landscape of, in, on the site. Um, and I just wonder if the, I don't think that a land is, uh, uh, subdivision or any ordinance should be thinking, well, how has it been done? And what are we comfortable with now? I mean, we should be thinking about what are we going to need? And what are we going to want the town to function and look like several decades from now? And granted, that's a somewhat academic exercise for me, but I still think it's where our heads should be as much as possible. And I would like to know if there are ways that in something like this, we could fold in some of those issues, if not requiring it, at least encouraging the, the integrity of building envelopes, and they, because you pay now, you pay later, and you can blow carbon uh, uh, out your, you know, I, I mean, I just, I just think there's so many issues there. I don't know if there's a role for the people from, uh, Planet of Thrive and Sustainability Committee to have a voice and, and things like this, but it, it appears to me that that's a pretty important issue that we could have.
Most of what you're referring to is addressed in the building fronts. Moveback is requiring at the energy code and hard, all those permanent, the requirements of the building is not in this. It's a different, whether the town adopt, uh, reinforces the moveback code, which is the energy.
Okay.
All that, right? That would be, that would be fun. Do we, do we use that?
We don't currently.
We don't enforce it at the local level, but it is, it is a statewide code that all contractors are held to regardless if it's new construction, renovation, what have you, but I don't enforce it on a local level because the town has not adopted it or opted in to enforce it on a local level.
And I've been teaching, actually, of course, uh, teaching train, uh, builders about the moveback code and a lot of things that I hadn't realized before, that even if the town doesn't enforce it, it's required by law, and builders need to understand that if they don't build the code, even if the code enforcement officer is not checking it, they can be sued by the homeowners, you know.
Uh-huh. They're also required to have a third party inspector do those inspections if the town is not adopting it or enforcing it.
It requires air tightness, it requires, it's improved and it's supposed to actually get, go a step even further. Um, it was already supposed to be passed. I mean, they keep on saying, anything, we're going to move to the next. Uh, yeah, right.
So, can I maybe try to reorganize your thought process?
Yes, please.
No, so I think it's a fair question globally to say, in our ordinance structure and our regulatory structure, what is it that we're actually trying to accomplish?
Yes.
And then, to, to be fair, there's some things that were, that we've done in the town that are good things, and then there's some things that I'm sort of thinking about better. And so the question, I would want to maybe put those as bullet points, you know, if you're saying climate change or sustainability or building envelope, um, you know, integrity of the building structure, land, land sustainability, those kinds of things. I would ask that, I think those are kind of like principles that you want to think about globally, and that the subdivision ordinance is a tool that has a specific purpose, and then if you go through that, you know, those principles, like, do these, do these things apply here or do they apply somewhere else?
Right, and that's good to know that there are other avenues for it.
Yeah, and so, as we're going through the standards of the subdivision ordinance, it might be worth asking, like, hey, where, um, you know, here's the state rules that we have to apply, and then there's the way it's organized, is there's like other sections, is there another section here that we need to add that actually helps within the context of what this ordinance is supposed to be doing, which is really just the division of land and buildings into more end of buildings essentially, not the, not the standards by which you actually build a building.
Okay, but the last, um, subdivision ordinance did have a protection of daylight.
I actually have that into the current, back into the current version. That's an optional standard.
Yeah, and when we ran across it, it was sort of, oh, but there's nothing to reinforce there.
Right.
So how do we make it so that people have their ability to hustle?
Yep.
The person's letting anybody do that now, anyway.
Yeah, I think it's, that's a tough thing for me, I, you know, like in the subdivision rules, it seems like, uh, how we, I don't, can't think of an instance. It's really, it'd be kind of fun to find a, an example of where in land division that would become a problem, does it have to do with that?
I think it's more like an urban dense, you know, and that somebody builds a short building, and then that somebody comes along ten years later and decides to build a tall building.
Yeah, so like, uh, like a site plan review standard, it's going to be a little boring, but it's, I, I've added it back into this room.
Yeah.
As a, as a comment, yeah.
I added two process things, like, um, procedurally, when we're reviewing the subdivision ordinance, um, and just the subdivision, I should say, the subdivision review process, um, are we, are major and minor site plan review, and we thought about that. And then, yeah, and then, um, just specifically, you know, it seems like the board stumbles frequently on when we get to, um, kind of the, the compliance and public hearing review, like, you know, sometimes it seemed, depending upon the the scale of what we're reviewing, um, that those kind of get muddied. And, well, do we have this one hearing, one night for the public hearing, and one for the compliance review, or do, do they get mashed together and?
Do you mean the completeness review? Because the wording of the completeness review always strikes me as like, all we're saying is the materials here, but then we actually go through it very carefully, and it's like, we're approving it, right? And that always seems hardly convenient.
Yeah, like, we have the site plan review, and I, the, which is great, you know, I think that, just that informal initial discussion of it, and then the, the, the completeness review to make sure, okay, we've got all the submitted there, and then we have the public hearing, you know, let everybody say whatever they need to say, and then our final compliance review and finding on it. And, you know, it seems like we stumble in how to segment that review process into hearings and.
The completeness review does end up being the compliance review. To make sure that all the information's there, we have to make sure that it's adequate information, so we.
It, it does. See, that's a perfect example, because I, you know, I wish there was more clarity about what our tasks are as a board for each step of that reviewed process. You know, and, and if there is any other is intertwined, then we need to make sure where and how, you know. Because I, I can see the completeness rule completely separate. We're just drilling down through the checklist, and do you have this, and do you have that?
But you don't really go through and figure out that they're missing anything until you say, is that, is that, are you meeting the standard with the information you provided us? And then, like, well, you've got a section here covering the subject, and then you go through it, and you go, oh, you didn't provide this information, and then we ask for more. It's like, that's, there's gotta be one in the same.
We're, we're ping ponging between the two, because we'll get through like ninety percent of completeness re- review, it seems like, and then there's a couple of those key things. We just can't, you know, make a determinant of completion yet, based upon our, where we end up with a finding on, on it later, and so then it's the old chicken and the egg thing.
You mean like the hang up about whether or not the trees were drawn on one of the plans, like late in the process?
Yeah, something like that, like, you know, was, you know, like, we didn't, was there enough information there to render an opinion upon, and we had to parse the opinion process, the findings process, come back to make a clear determination on the completeness of that.
And it seems to me that this last one is a bad example, because we actually, we went through it and as a completeness review, had the public hearing, and then we thoroughly went through it again, and we don't usually do that. It's sort of a, and now you know why. Well, it, it's usually just that the, the completeness review ends up being us really going through it thoroughly. And then it's like, yeah, everything's meeting the criteria, but we're not approving it yet, because this was really just completeness. And now we have the public hearing, and then you hear people's objection, and in that last one, then it got kicked through the cycle.
Before I lose the thought too, the, the road waiver request keeps coming up again and again and again, and there's some absolutist language in that that seems kind of incongruent with the intent of, of just the road waiver request review process.
Does this one offer, I like a small, I know, like we've talked about, if there are only a few houses in a subdivision, can't you have a different standard for the roads than for a twenty-five house subdivision?
Uh, so, in this version, I don't, we have, I have a version, actually, that does have a major and a minor subdivision process. And then I think for some reason, um, we decided to take that out. Now we can easily add it back in, but it's really just a discussion about like, does it constitute a major subdivision versus a minor subdivision? Is it like four lots or less? Is it, you know, up to six, you know, to me, the, I don't, my, my observation is, you haven't gotten a lot of applications that are over, like six lots or something like that, so there's some discussion that needs to be had about what would, what makes sense here as a major subdivision versus a minor subdivision, and then you can start to, we can start to spin up some standards from that, like, here's a, you know, the, the changing the standards of the roads, that's something that we might require a little more thought, because there's other implications that, of that as well, but. Yeah, there is a process for that, which I've already attempted before.
Still, the completeness review, how valuable is that? I mean, you're going to have a preliminary view.
Yep.
And I don't know if it's required by law, or state law, I don't know that, but does, you're right that it seemed in a large extent is redundant. So, why not, could you not expect people that they're going to submit a complete application, and then you go through it? And in areas where it's not complete, they've got to, they've got to change that, I mean,
there's all sorts of misunderstandings that we, you know, people, people aren't necessarily, at least, they're coming in, they've never done this before, or go through the completeness, and they just misunderstood something, or, you know. It seems to me, I don't, I don't, I mean, I agree, it doesn't, it seems like we should be able to streamline this, but I don't also know how we separate, I guess almost it's just okay that, like, okay, so we tried going through and we come across stuff that they don't have in the application, and I guess that's what we always do anyway, is just say, you didn't really actually successfully answer this section of the.
Maybe the reality is that this is a highly demanding ordinance, I mean, there's a great many requirements that you have to fulfill, so the idea that maybe those days are past, that you could just walk in and say, well, I got some laying my grandfather gave me, I'm going to split up a few homes and, and then call it good. It's much more tactical now, anyway. So, that people.
Have a subdivision for, for people who have their own family property, and they want to split up lots and give them to their kids.
Well, yeah.
Those aren't, yeah, we'd be not even subdivisions, but.
Yeah, that makes sense. Family, okay, yeah.
Um, but I, I, having watched much of the process, I agree with you totally that there needs to be a streamline. There also needs to be, as you mentioned, I think, an understanding of when you're in public hearing mode, and you're hearing from the public, and when you're not, and when that gets stopped, and then you're doing your work, as opposed to just constantly let people, um, often repeat themselves. Um, but, um.
So, the process that's set up in this draft is, is, I'm still going to call it a briefcase process, so it's a sketch plan review, which I continue to believe is a good opportunity to come in and that here's our idea and let, you know, people, even adjacent properties or whatever, you know, could understand what's happening, uh, in a low cost and low, low, um, the stakes aren't real high when you come in for a sketch plan review, like you haven't done all the things that you would do for a complete application.
That's where a lot of your concerns should, but should be addressed.
But you get the opportunity to like hear some feedback and, um, make some tweaks to the plan that you might not have considered, because, you know, usually when a developer comes in, you're kind of, uh, you're developing a plan in a vacuum, right, until you get a chance, like, we out, you know, do that outreach, and, um, I think it's helpful to require that more than, um, just make it voluntary, because some people aren't just, aren't going to go through that process, and to me, it makes for a better, it usually makes for a better product. I don't think I've ever been involved in a subdivision where we haven't made good changes based on comments that you get at sketch plan review. By the time you get to the complete application, a lot has been invested in that process, and it's much more difficult, uh, both financially and like mentally to, to make a hardship, you know, to get input than you might have gotten, you know, related in the process. So I do think it's good practice to have a sketch plan review. Um, the next one, uh, and this one, we don't call it, it's not called completeness, it's just called final plan review. So here's what we're going to require on the final plan, here's, you know, there's a, not even, it's sort of set up like a checklist, here's the things that you need to supply, we're going to go over that, make sure you submitted those things, which is then going to give us the opportunity to review this project. Uh, or for the planning board to say, hey, um, you know, here, uh, we're not, we're not inclined to grant a waiver of this submission requirement, because we're concerned that the water quality of this area is at risk or whatever. We do want you to do, uh, not pump, that's it, that's the part in the process where you think, I think the board and applicant have a conversation about, you know, did we provide you enough, did the applicant provide you enough information to make a good decision about that process? And then, I think, then there's the public hearing process, which is a separate meeting from the final and review, or what we'll call completeness review, and then there's the final decision. So it's still the same process, and I think my dessert has a history of allowing maybe a little more, um, back and forth during different phases of the development than we need to, um, and that's actually in the ordinance now set up, but you don't have to allow as much back and forth as you typically can see. But it's sometimes just how it is, or, you know, that's just the culture of the review, I think. But it doesn't mean you have to continue doing it that way, or maybe we learned about, you know, how we want to operate subdivision, you don't get a lot of subdivision, so it's really hard to say, this is how we're going to do better the next time, because, I mean, when, there we go, when the last subdivision was a real subdivision application, sized than, you know, the one we just had, which again, wasn't even a, like, that's a, it's not even a land division, it was more of a structural division, so.
He's a new member, I'm happy to hear this.
Yeah, they don't come along very often. I can't remember the last subdivision.
You get more amendments than we actually get.
Yeah, I feel like we get subdivisions all the time.
I think you do.
Yeah, we do. Get a lot of amendments.
Yeah, amendments.
We just had, oh, was it? No, okay, that was an amendment.
We worked for a subdivision in Sioux Harbor last year.
We had, they, as far, we kept on looking at his.
Bash Morris.
And then the, the one on, just outside of, how far?
They're all amendments, yeah.
Anyway, I think it's a good point though.
Off the woods road, that was, yeah.
So what I would encourage you to do is take a look at this, the way that this process is laid out, and based on your experience with the last review, does that, does this help that, or is it just add more confusion, and we have to kind of tweak the, tweak the language a little bit? And we don't, we could also use consistent language, we could call it completeness review instead of final plan review, we don't have to, you know, use new terms if that's what we're comfortable with, but it's the process, I think we need to review the process, and one thing you'll see on this, on the version that you have, I'm, we're, all I'm doing right now is just going through and making sure, like, we have, uh, notification requirements that are consistent with what we're trying to achieve and those kinds of things, that'd be thirty days in advance of, a lot of weather, working with Kim on those things. But that's, you know, section five of the ordinance.
A checklist for the road waiver request.
Well, we can go through that, because I do have some questions. But let, let me, uh, and I think these are really helpful, because as I'm thinking about it, uh, now I can also start to think about it from the perspective that you guys have, which is really why I want, part, you know, main reason to have this, really review the subdivision ordinance and other groups, because it's about the process more than, you know, the policy.
Right, and there may be ways in which, in terms of just playing boardsmanship issues, we could be talking, figuring out the, the right place to put issues, and so we're prepared ahead, to, ahead of time to be able to do that without saying, geez, where does this fit in?
Yeah.
Um, and then, be, and lead ourselves down cul-de-sac, into cul-de-sac, so.
But the, the issue of the road waivers, if we had, we keep on arriving at the road wish, waiver issue, because the ordinance requires all subdivisions to have these great big roads, and so if we had created a, if you're a small subdivision, and it seems like it's most of the time like four, max five houses on some tiny little side road, and they're asking to have a waiver, and it's like, I, I wouldn't want to demand if they're only putting four houses on a little road, that they put it in a great big highway, I don't. Um, anyway, and it may not come up very, but I still think it's worth, and especially because then we wouldn't have to deal with the weight, road waiver issue if we weren't requiring subdivisions of small size, just to have such big roads, just go ahead and say, okay, if you're small, you don't need to have a great big road, and then we don't need all those roads.
Yeah, you're just looking at, you've got standards for driveway, you've got the standards for road, and where, do you meet in the middle somewhere, or is the driveway actually adequate, or how does that?
What was so, what was so special about May fifth, twenty fifteen?
That was the day that we added the language, the access, we took away the road frontage with requirements, the laws, and added the access provision at that time of year.
Everybody understand what that?
Except the great big wide roads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it? That's two thousand fifteen.
So, uh, town had a discussion about why are we requiring every lot to be, you know, two hundred feet wide? I have two hundred feet of road frontage, I think that was, that was the standard at the time.
Oh, very, yeah, different zones.
So, in, in some places, eating zoning districts require road frontage, so in Mount Desert, um, it's the reason why, it's, it's all tied together with roads, but there's a lot of historical, historic subdivisions that didn't have roads, and they don't have road frontage, so they're starting to become.
And just lots created.
Lots that created that didn't have road image, all these things, and so, you know, road frontage is more of a geometrical requirement and on. You know, road frontage is more of a geometrical requirement and on pay like looking down at a plan, not necessarily how it. Relates to a, you know, good development on on land. So the decision was, let's get rid of. Road frontage and instead really focusing on like a goal is to provide safe. Access for emergency vehicles to get to your lot. And that's where we went. Uh, that's so, so that was the change in two thousand fifteen. That didn't always solve, that didn't solve the problem with roads. Because there's still a bunch of roads that were created in town that were created well before, you know, the current road standards were adopted. And that's the reason why the provision is in the subdivision. The the reason why there was a provision created for. People to come to the planning board to ask for a waiver of road standards so that you could still get a building permit on your. Lot that's been in existence for years before the road. Standards became, you know, fifty feet by eighty feet wide and, you know, three foot shoulders on the side. Um, and those standards, if you're in the, if they were, I think if they were in the. Land use ordinance, the planning board couldn't weigh, can't weigh.
Can't weigh. That's why we put it in those subdivisions.
So they're in the subdivision ordinance because subdivisions, roads are three or three lots or more. And subdivisions are three lots or more. And it kind of makes sense to have. Those standards in the subdivision ordinance. And then the waiver provision is more flexible in the subdivision ordinance than it is in the main ordinance. So the the concept is we're trying to figure out ways. To provide a lot more flexibility for what you have for existing development and also recognize that you don't need. You know, you don't really need uh super wide roads to provide safe access to lots. On principle, like that's the guiding principle. In fact, we're actually working on another revision to six A, six B, whatever this, six P eleven, something. Um, to to try to continue to refine, you know, the legal implications of all that. But on principle. The policy decision is you, the town just wants to require safe access to lots for every lot. You have to make sure you have safe access and. There are certain standards to do that. To get to your question, Meredith, I think is a larger policy discussion about road standards in general. And I think that is a really interesting question. And I might separate that question out from. You know, just revising the subdivision ordinance and like really try and tackle that as like it's a policy choice because there's other. People we need to kind of bring into that part of the conversation. Like, let's talk to the project chief and say, do you have? You know, the capacity to serve, you know, these smaller divisions or talk to the public works director about like, okay, what are some of the standards for? You know, smaller roads or maybe we get a couple engineers involved. That's a, that's a side question in my mind. A really important one.
Yeah, I think of the, there's a. A road off of the Whitney Farm Road, Richardson's, um, he's always getting flack because he's got this great big wide. Entrance that he put the sawhorses in. Everybody's like, why did you put in a three way, three lane highway into your properties? Because it was a subdivision and that's what they were part. It's absurd.
Yes.
You know, and it to this day irritates people areas of like, it's just not appropriate. It doesn't, it. Takes away from the character of a neighborhood to have these huge roads go into them.
Yep. So I'm not trying to dodge all these really important, as you pointed out, but I do think like. That's a great thing to put on the list for a policy decision that the town needs to make. And we can. Uh, build that, we can revise that in a struct- in a new structure that we're creating. So like the focus for me right now is. Um. Let, we need to, we need to have a good subdivision ordinance that we can then. You know, continue to make a little bit better.
So maximizing our efforts here tonight, is this the level of discussion you're? Wanting from the board? I mean, kind of ping ponging around the things or we need to like.
Well, I think the first question I had was just buy in on the fact that we're gonna revise, we're gonna repeal and replace the existing ordinance, but we need some. We're gonna have to all be careful, uh, provide some feedback to make sure when we're reviewing the repeal on place that we capture the things that are. Important about the existing ordinance. But why? And number two, I do like the, you know, here structurally, these are some things that we want to make sure are important about our. A new ordinance. So um process, you know, do we need to consider a major or minor subdivision? Uh, do we need to make sure that the review process is laid out more clearly so it's easier for the board to manage? Those are important pieces of the discussion. Uh, and then um I think all these other things, I I'm just writing notes and making sure we can capture them because we can, some of them we won't tackle. In this. Iteration, but we will put on the list of things to tackle like the roads.
Oh boy. Can I talk about a couple of particular things I wondered about when I read the draft?
Sure.
Can I just ask a overall question first, just since you're talking about the policy and how uh and the free. It seems like a lot of times where we're. Going through things and then we get knocked into the other section of the ordinances and then we have to review that. And then we have to review that, all those criteria over again over here. And is there any way that? Um, you know, when we review criteria that are is in this, but is also in. Another section of the ordinances that we have to review anyway, can we just say? You know, erosion control and. Uh, what sewage disposal, if that's all, if we all have to do that in the Luso when we're review it, can we just say? Now review that section of the Luso. If you pass that, okay, now we can just jump past that all. Because I feel like we do a ton of redundancy. I mean, the whole like five point nine of Luso seems to be completely. Now, would you say that shoreline, we're gonna make you just go through all the things that she just went through already, but let's just go over one more time.
Or like the state statute standards.
Yeah. Plug that in as a section rather than.
How about we do this, just for discussion purposes, because that's a good point.
Yeah.
I think, and then if you could hold your thoughts on. I just want to kind of go through, we don't need to go into a deep dive on each of the sections, but let's just flip through how, what, how the ordinance is structured. And then you can ask questions like as well. So the way that this draft is structured. Is there's the purpose statement, which we can make some tweaks for. We can, um, then there's the applicability section and some of the um authority administration stuff. That's like all the. You know, administration stuff under section two. And then this ordinance is. A, uh, it does have the definitions upfront. I personally like to have the definitions in the back. It doesn't really matter to me where they are. It's really. Personal preference, I think. Um, I think we've got the discussion for, but so I'm happy to leave it wherever it works.
Were you in agreement with it being at the back?
No, I think it should be front loaded because if you don't understand upfront what the terms are that you're, what they mean. You you would tend to not rush to read the back of the document.
Sure, um.
And I, and I think these are important things to understand.
Absolutely.
I think they are important, but my inclination for wanting them at the end is that. Uh, you're going through things and don't know the definition. If they're in the front, they're a few pages in and it's harder to find them. Whereas if they're at the back. And you don't know what something means, you just pull to the back and and there's everything.
And in reality, I don't care, but I'm, I'm used to reading statutes and the statutes, the first section, statutes, the first section.
I do not disagree with that. I say actually, yeah, it doesn't matter.
I don't, so I'll, I'll sleep no matter where they are.
Doesn't matter. But this is the way it's organized for this one.
Yes.
Um, and so I've used a model or two to make this ordinance, so it isn't like I'm just making this. I didn't just draft this out of my own. Experience. There's no sense of running back the wheel on some of these things, so. Um, and then section four is basically the administrative um procedures and fees. So that's where, you know, we're gonna. Uh, it's a select board needs to select, um, you know, have subdivision fees and. Um, what's the schedule for advertising and those things, we gotta work work out that. If you have to have a joint meeting with an adjacent municipality because there's a project that spans to uh town lines. And then section five um is the application review process. That I think you would want to pay particular attention to. In 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 addition to uh Bill, what you were saying and also what I'm saying, like, for these terms, we're, we like, we're more comfortable with the term. Completeness review not on plan. And then there's some, um, section six, which is what we are calling submission requirements. And as a both a planner and uh sometimes applicant, I actually like this format, but if it doesn't work for you guys, we can change it. But this is more like a checklist format in my mind, so it makes it very simple. You know, these are the things that you're, you have to do and it's gonna be organized in this way. So that when you get an application, it's not like what we have to do right now as applicants is basically make up an application that makes sense. Whereas if you lay it out in the subdivision ordinance or even more formal application, you'd say this is how we want these. Um, these materials organized, so it's much easier to follow. So right now, uh, oftentimes you just make it up based on like other experience and other places that actually makes sense where in my. You know, it doesn't matter how you hear. Hopefully it's all there. So that's the way this is organized in section six. And then same thing in six point two is final time submission. So these are all the things that you as a board are looking for. To help show that you're meeting the standard of this project. Um, and then under section six, and so in in like back and forth drafting, we may end up, you know, having more than twenty seven. Final review criteria because we want to make sure there's a submission for standard that you're trying to meet in the ordinance. Um, section seven is the statutory review criteria. So that this is the state subdivision rules, section seven. So it's all that, um, pollution, sufficient water, municipal water supply, traffic. All those things. And this probably would be where we might go back and forth to some degree um with what's in the land use ordinance and there's some things in here that might. Help, you know. Do the same, basically.
This is all of section forty four or four, it looks like?
Yeah. And then I added, um, I don't know if in your draft, but in my current draft, uh, seven point two one is the access to direct sunlight. So I just added it back. If I haven't written this thing out yet. For discussion purposes. Um, and then section eight is the additional review criteria. And so these are like in addition to things that might, that the town that feels is important. But might not be specifically required in the statute. So for example, uh phosphorus and sport. So if you're doing a subdivision on. Um. Long one. You want to require some analysis of phosphorus so that you're not, you know, increasing the phosphorus slightly, that kind of stuff. Um, this is um where we talked about uh public sites and open spaces. There's a preservation of naturalness or features. There's like traffic impact in the sense that it deals with what we have specifically in town. There's shoreline zoning standards.
Non-conforming roads.
Yep, and so. Under the road section, this is under section, um, I think under yours, it would be eight one. Uh, one four, there are like the reserves section there.
Yeah.
That would be where I would add the road um design and construction standards that are already in your ordinance. So we're adding those as section one point or eight point one four. And then under eight point fifteen, non-conforming roads, I think that would be where we would want to add. The provision that's in the ordinance now about um road waiver standards, I'm changing what we call it. Um. Road standard review proceeding. So I think that's uh early in the subdivision on inside camera. But I was reading it today and I was thinking, we. Really, I mean, that seemed like there's, felt like there was more to it than that when we first drafted it, but. Seems like there's a few things that we want to add to that process. Which we can have discussion. Uh, the other thing, you know, sort of skimming down through, you know, sidewalks and water supply, this is where we could say, you know. We're requiring more information about water, stormwater management. Um, and then I have another thing, uh, section nine, which is additional review criteria for mobile home parks, which is something that. Um, I think you have to have in the ordinance. Um, section ten is the review criteria for cluster subdivisions. So as I've said before. Cluster subdivisions. Are thing. They don't have to be associated with something else, like workforce housing, unless you really want them to be, but they are totally separate.
Correct.
And so these are, this, these are just standards for cluster.
Yeah, what, what about the separate provision for workforce housing?
So the separate provision for workforce housing is actually in, I actually need to.
Is you can have a workforce clusters, workforce housing cluster subdivision. Workforce housing, regular subdivision.
Absolutely.
Uh, you can have workforce housing, non-land divisions.
Not handling that.
Okay.
What is, okay, next question, would it help to have, you've gone through all that and I know there's more, but. Would it help to have as part of this ordinance somewhere and a concise outline?
Yeah.
That describes for everybody, including the board, but the public as well, what the steps are.
Yes.
Boom, 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 boom.
Yep.
So that to help people when you're in the weeds. Figure out how to get that swamp drain rather than dealing with those alligators.
Yes.
Um. It just seems to me a section that. Or whether it's in the ordinance or a handout or.
No.
Wasn't that, were you saying that one section was?
Well, no, I think what you're talking about actually in another town I'm working on, the ordinance, like we're creating a whole new. Insolidated ordinance, structure for, um, we act, there is a section at the beginning that says like how to use this ordinance. And it's like section one, how to use this ordinance. And it basically just does what you.
Right.
Just talking about. So I can look at that and see if there's any good way to do it, you know. In Mount Desert, we have all separate ordinances, which sometimes is good and sometimes it's bad, but. But I don't think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like how, how is this application classified? You know, what, what is it?
What is a minor subdivision, are you asking me?
What is a minor cluster subdivision for workforce housing or, you know, kind of?
Yeah, we should try to figure out. I think that's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause I bet you we're gonna have more layers to the cake as. The non-land subdivisions probably increase relative to the land subdivisions.
Yes. I think we should create also a site plan review ordinance, which will be, and then I think there's some language that you can add to your site plan. Of the ordinance, which helps us so that you don't have, I had to talk to Andy about this, so that you don't have to do a separate subdivision review. When you're also doing site plan review ordinance that deals with like multiple structures on it and multiple. Dwelling units on a single lot kind of division, you know, because. Like the site plan review ordinance is much more applicable to the things that you really want to get at when you're dealing with like one structure and multiple. You know, apartment, say you're doing an apartment building. You know, it's the things that you're interested in aren't like. You know, do you have, uh, they're just different standards. You don't need to do certain things, but it, but what you want to focus in on is do you have a good? Parking plan? Do you have a appropriate lighting standards? If I were doing a. Um, you know, a five lot subdivision on Beach Hill Road.
Yeah, it's the same thing that you're gonna do. I, I mean, maybe. Sorry, I bounced around, but.
That's right.
Why are, you know, when you think about the non-land subdivision, why is something like a. Apartment building being reviewed under a subdivision ordinance? When so much of the review criteria is really kind of specific to that use. And probably more so to the land use ordinance than the subdivision ordinance.
I don't, I think it's a clunky way. Because it works, yeah.
We are gonna.
C O A building.
Yeah, why, why, why are we going through subdivision review?
Yeah, I think that should have been a site plan, some sort of site plan review because you doesn't, you're dealing more with the structure. And the the things that that structure brings with it as opposed to like the things that you're dealing with on, do you care about, the lot size is already there. You're just dealing with the implications of the structure of the site plan is most important.
So the site plan review would address those kind of specific non-lander, non-land vision. Subdivision applications.
What even made that a subdivision? Cause it was, it's owned by one.
Well, because it says, um, the subdivision law actually says by development. So you're creating three.
Three dwellings, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So there's some language that you. So there's some language that you have to have that will allow this sub, the site plan review process to substitute for the. Subdivision process. Cause they cover the same.
I'm gonna make a wager in the next five years, we're gonna be reviewing more of those than we are actual individual.
Yeah, I don't doubt it. Yep. Even that, even the site. I haven't started working on the other, that's through the next. Uh, major thing is, you know. You know, like commercial developments or even, um. Stand the standard book or the one we just did for, um, Land and Garden Preserve, like that's a site plan review. That was, it's that, that conditional use. Permit process that you have is a very clunky, it's not, you're using it as a site plan review process too, really should be. Just doing a site. And it doesn't have to be more burdensome, it just helps focus the.
Like I think you, you could keep ties to those kind of projects within the language of the subdivision ordinance. But there's a very clear kick out if it's this. To site.
Yep, you gotta work on that.
So it, it should seem like it's, you can get kicked out for. Site plan review. If you're too small, you can get kind of a short checklist like we have, you know, like. They'll all be at the same crossroad.
Yep. Yeah.
So why, why have you given us two different affordable?
Uh, so I don't know which version you, which, but in the version that I have just finished today, there's a blue section of words. It says six, section eleven. So the thing that I just came to do is already in your, in the draft.
Looks pretty darn close.
So it's the same thing.
Yeah.
This draft of the affordable housing density bonus is directly related to L D two thousand three, which requires. The town to have this exact language. Um, projects that are, you know, eighty percent of the, the area median income up to a certain amount. Um, I think it's hundred and twenty percent. So there's a density bonus requirement in state law that we have to enact here. Which is different than the one that you currently have. So this version of the affordability, affordable housing density bonus is not just me taking the workforce housing provisions and plucking it into your ordinance. It's a whole new thing. And so what I think will be really interesting is to say. If there's any provisions from that or the current ordinance that we wanna make sure carries over or. Because this is very specific to, um, projects that are, um. Up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, I believe. Do we wanna try to have a provision that's sort of like in between, like, do you wanna allow a workforce housing subdivision that deals with projects that are, say, between a hundred and twenty and. A hundred and fifty percent of the area median income and give a certain, a different density bonus to those. Um, types of projects, um, because there's still a need, you know. Every meeting I come to, like you say, I wanna bring in like a chart that says like, here's what a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income actually translates to. Yeah, Kathy might know right, right, sitting in front of her computer, but so Kathy, if you're listening, you wanna chime in. Um, maybe you can do the math, but I forget, every meeting I forget.
I'll get one for you, have it ready for you next time.
No, no, I can do it next time. I was just wondering if you were, if you were sitting right there and heavily off the top of your head, but I think it's important. One of the infographics that we're working on for. Our housing stuff is like, here's a translation that mean, you know, here's what. These percentages actually translate to income. Because I think that helps us understand like this is who we're talking about.
Right.
And not like some random, you know, a hundred and twenty percent, but anyway.
If I may throw out the idea that you might wanna consider area median income, are you talking about. The town of Mount Desert, Hancock County, or the state as a whole?
Yeah, right. Yes, the area median income, that's what it. So.
And that's defined by.
That's what we're dealing with here. I'm just posing the question to the town and we don't need to add it this time around, or we could continue to work on it and add it. But I think that this L D two thousand three requirement captures projects of up to a certain income level. But there may be a reason to think about whether or not we wanna give density bonuses for other projects that are up to another. Uh, income level, just as a thought. So you should read this because it's really important. Uh, I just reserve. Number twelve, section twelve, section thirteen deals with waivers, section fourteen deals with the presence of. Section fifteen is different performance guarantees. Um, then there's a violations provision. And then a build process. I went right to Superior Court, cause that's what we currently do.
What?
Yes.
Under the revisions of approved plans.
Yep.
Something we talked about being capped and applied here. On the page two as far as. Like so far, my, uh, subdivision was done nineteen. Eighty, let's just say. Um, right now currently it doesn't seem to matter when a subdivision was approved, it's got to go planning boards to create a new law that goes outside the boundaries of subdivision. Um, or creates new dwelling units. Um, is there any way to cap a year for revisions? That has to go before the planning board instead of, cause you know how it's a five year, you wait five years and. You create two lots, you wait five years, you can do a third one without having to go to planning board because there's a five year limitation.
Yep.
So you can add like that for revisions so that the board isn't looking at. Amendments, uh, subdivisions that happen, like you said, back in nineteen eighty.
So you can look into that, whether or not it's required or not, yeah.
So it seems like we've had to review things that I'm just thinking like, why would anybody in the subdivision care? This. Small moving.
That was my.
Yeah, and if we could just say like, well, after ten years. There's a certain amount of moving things around that you own the land, it doesn't impact the subdivision.
Yeah, I'm, I, yep. We can look into that.
Yeah.
I'm trying not to think of reasons why. It happened.
Feel like we've done that a lot, and I, anyway.
Proceed, my, I got a appeals question.
Yeah.
One, uh, well, a couple, um. Why does, why does subdivision go to a, a direct to Superior Court?
It doesn't, I don't think it has to do that. I think that was a decision that was made by the town a while ago.
And, and if we were. Fortunate to have site plan review, should site plan for review for those really specific. Non-land division applications really be going to Superior Court?
But keep in mind, if you gotta make a decision. Like on applications for different moves and somebody feels it, those he feels for, they make their decision, it doesn't, and then after that. He go to the court or whatever, he feels for a decision doesn't matter, it's what you guys did.
It kicks.
Kind of a wasted step.
Yeah.
And a waste of money and a waste of time.
But I just, I, I think it, it localizes the decision process. If it's remanded back to us, you know, and I think we might. Arrive at a better decision, you know, for the benefit of the town than just kicking it out and. And orbiting in, you know, into the ether of the Superior Court process. Well.
We, we have to deal with the reality that we don't actually have a terribly robust board of appeals and it's difficult to find enough people and so. You wanna make sure that you've got the ability. To respond.
I know, it just from, uh, because I had a project that got rejected and then came through the appeals court, and I think it just made. Clients feel like. Um, that it truly got heard, that there wasn't sort of a bias or something like that. That second level of review. When, when you don't agree with the decision that just within not having to go to the Supreme Court, they wouldn't have ever taken it to court. But they were, they, they really appreciated that second layer of saying, did you guys really? I don't think that was fair what they decided, giving, getting a second chance within the town, I think it's often helpful.
I just gotta say that there, this, there's so much to this job and there's so much that needs to be understood. And there's so much that needs to be decided that unless you've got a board of appeals that is up for the task. Of becoming as conversant with this material as the planning board tries to be. Because it's doing it twice a month all year long, you run the risk of having. A, a board have even more difficulty making an accurate decision, whether it's the same decision or not. Um, vis a vis the ordinances, I just.
I, I think kicking it to Superior Court diminishes the authority. Of a board's decision on an application. And I agree with Meredith that I wish there was more localized, second chance review of it. You know, good or bad, to remand it back to us and allow us to process it again and say, well, you guys messed up. You know, we're going to Superior Court and we gotta, you know, abide by whatever the court says. But why can't we figure it out before that? And then if there was like a, some kind of statute of limitations, like it's not an infinite loop of appeals board and supreme. Remands to the planning board and back and forth, okay, then it's gotta go out to Superior Court at some point, but. You know, I, I wish we had more opportunity in the appeals process in subdivision applications.
I think that, uh, that's a fair question and I think there are ordinances that allow that to happen. And let me do a little more research to just figure out. I mean, a lot of it gets back to what Tim was saying. It's a more efficient process for everybody to not go through. Order of appeal and back to planning board.
Well, I could argue that, I could argue it is. I mean, look at the quarry, you know. I mean, that, I know that's a totally different application.
This may be a conversation to have with the select board. Because I think their opinions about how to organize this kind of stuff would be important too, and what they think is possible.
Yeah.
And reasonable. I mean, and you've got all this, you've got the other question, is this a de novo hearing and you're going to go through the whole thing all over again? Are they just simply reviewing what was done to and determining whether or not there are any obvious errors or? So you've got the standard of review that becomes very important as well.
Yeah, does it, you know, and, and the image of the town and these appeals getting kicked straight to court. I mean, why can't the town figure this stuff out? Why is this in court again and for this kind of application and?
Yeah, maybe some applications, it doesn't matter what process you do, they're gonna end up right to court.
Yeah, I mean, of course.
But it's worth, uh, looking into and I'll definitely.
Yep.
Do that. Um, so I wanna be mindful of time, but I think that, um. There's a lot to do on the subdivision ordinance and I don't know if everybody's had a real chance to look into it, but, but I, one. I struggle with figuring out the best way to actually review a full subdivision ordinance. In a meeting, so we're gonna have to do it in chunks, I, I think. So my suggestion would be, if you guys wanna read over it, if someone. May, may love to read over it and say, hey, you forgot this definition on page, you know, whatever. And here's some other red line versions. I'm happy to accept all of those. Um, but maybe we wanna focus, not necessarily tonight, but at another self-follow up meeting. Like we're gonna go over, um, you know, sections one through, you know, six. And just say, this is a process, we're gonna focus in on process.
Mm-hmm.
And then at a follow up, or, or if we have extra time, we can tackle some other things and then section, you know, seven and eight. We're gonna do, uh, the next meeting, cause these are standards, we could probably.
Yeah.
Some of those standards and some of them we're gonna really wanna dive into, so.
Yeah, I like that and all, I mean, one through six and then seven and eight and then the balance of it.
Yep.
Can I just throw out one small comment about one of these here that I had a question about? It's, it's five point two point six, um, abiding land, notifying abiding landowners.
Yep.
I'm wondering why we don't have a time requirement in there, like, like I wouldn't really appreciate it if I got, it doesn't say by when. You have to send the letters. I wouldn't necessarily appreciate receiving a letter two days before. Um, a hearing on a subdivision. For a, on a neighboring property, so why don't we require somebody to send, say, would, send. And now you say, it doesn't, they don't have to necessarily receive it or certify to receive it, so that's another question, but. Send it within ten days prior to the hearing. Um, which should give the mail time to do, to get it to people. I'm just, I'm just wondering why we don't require that.
We, uh, we could, what section was that again?
Uh, it's five point two point six C. On my version it's page twelve, but I'm not sure that's accurate.
Yep, it is accurate. Yeah, and one thing that I am going through and just trying to like. Match up notification requirements that we already have in the town to make sure that we're.
Yes.
Kind of consistent with that and also, uh, recognizing that like, you know, sometimes the, we may need to extend timelines a little bit because of. And the time it takes to do certain reviews and advertising, uh, with the, and that kind of thing takes more time than what the statute might require.
I did two more small question.
Yeah.
Six point two, final plan submissions. Final plan submissions shall approximate the layout shown on the sketch plan plus any recommendations made by the, by the planning board. Does, does that mean that it doesn't allow for the applicant themselves to make modifications and. All of the, of the final sketch plan that varies from the. The final plan that's various in the sketch plan, I mean, it's, it seems like it's. It says approximate the layout, so I guess there's some room there. Um, and maybe that's good enough, but.
So the question is, does it limit the ability to change?
Of the applicant to change what the final plan looks like as opposed to the sketch plan. I'm thinking, well, maybe I figured out that I really wanted to have X lots really wouldn't, Y lots or something. I don't know. Maybe some new issue appears.
Yeah, hand drawn, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and I do, I think it's fair that, that people are developing this and they give you a sketch plan and then they're, oh, you know, I like to do this.
Yeah.
This a little differently.
Yeah.
But we've had that discussion of like, when is this a substantive change as opposed to. Uh, just.
Yeah.
Well, I, I wouldn't, it would be, I think I'm fortunate in most cases to make people have to go back to the sketch plan again.
Well, that's, that's a. Yeah, I mean, you could make the sketch plan voluntary. This is a required step in the process in this version. Um, I think it's interesting to think about how the language there. Because you are facing. Some, some review and expectation of the final plan on what it is that you just presented in the previous version. So if you put in and say, hey, I originally was gonna do a. You know, a four lot subdivision before houses and then, and then all of a sudden I come back based on whatever. And then did a, you know, eight lot subdivision with. You know, four duplexes on each lot or whatever, you know, that's a substantive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Try to figure out how do you, what does, you know. Approximate mean, I think there's some flexibility there, but it's worth looking into. Yep.
And this, the other night at the meeting, last night's meeting, somebody mentioned that you don't use transparencies anymore.
We don't, I don't think they're required.
Because it's mentioned in the final plan.
But, yep.
That's it?
That's it?
No, I, well, no, I have other things, but they're not really.
Send me the red lines. I'll send you the word version if it's that, if it's helpful.
No, 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 that's all.
Uh, so I think it's still a work in progress.
Yeah, your mobile home review staff, you go, you've been on growth product for climbing.
Yep.
We don't have a.
Good catch.
And also the, uh, you talked about. Road review standards for the planning board, under, it's not on the waiver section, um. You mentioned that this is a place you could probably add it, like, is it not compliant roads?
Yep, or some.
But that always says within the subdivisions.
Right, we haven't. Right, we haven't, we could change that state or haven't added it and figure out how to add it in yet.
Are the only two waivers you could possibly get in the town are the road waiver request? And the notification of assign yard setbacks.
I mean, no, I mean, subdivision requires me grant waivers on. Like, a lot of sections in here, only on the subdivision. Like, if somebody doesn't.
Is it clear in there?
There's a waiver provision, like, what you have to do, what you have to ask for for waiver, and what waivers you can grant.
Request it and then explain why you can't.
Yeah. So in my past, some of my past work, which I think is helpful is, you know, if you, I were coming in as an applicant. Uh, I or a planning board, I would appreciate this, that the applicant has a, here's a list of waivers that we're requesting. And here's why we're requesting those waivers, and you go over that. As part of your application. And then or and there could be situations where.
So why?
Is that in the?
So why do we have like a specific then? Process for the road waiver request?
Because the road waiver request happens to be a benefit to people who are in existing, who are on a road. Road standards.
Yeah.
And they're not an actual subdivision, they're coming to you to say. Hey, I wanna build a house on this lot that's existed since nineteen whatever. And it's on a road that's only got, you know, it doesn't have a fifty foot wide right of way.
Be- because of the potential frequency of the applicant, uh, of an application for that.
Yep. And we need it to be in the subdivision ordinance and not the land use ordinance.
And going through a generalized waiver request. You know, list is just really kind of application specific.
Yep, potentially, I think I would wanna make it its own thing in the subdivision ordinance, but I'm working with Andy on that. So I'm, we're trying to make it easy for somebody who just lives at the end of a road and wants to build something, to come in and say, well, we don't need to. We're not applying for a subdivision, we're applying for a waiver of these standards, and maybe I exist. On a subdivision that was approved way back when, but this is where, I think this is like the trickiest thing that we've worked on.
Probably gone back for a while time for revisions since we added it.
But it's tricky because it makes sense, like, that's what, as a policy choice, I think that's what the town wants to allow. It's just weird. I've actually talked to so many other place towns, I'm thinking, how do you? So there's no good answer, I haven't found a great model.
You know, it's like you're penalizing the people that live on a. You know, non-compliant road, but.
I feel like.
At that point, it didn't matter what the road was, because as long as you had the minimum width of the road lot on the roadway, it's all that matter. Didn't matter if the road was in, you know, bad shape or narrow, it was just as long as you had it on the road.
Yeah, uh, so we, I mean, we started again back to that section of the land use ordinance to try to make some revisions, I keep going back to. The first statement is the standard, which is all lots shall provide. Safe access for emergency vehicles, that's the policy.
Mike Bender's okay with it, you know, why would we?
Right.
That's the policy.
He's the one that knows, like, trucks and toning radius, you know, just. It just, but it's, you know, now they wanna, we're talking about taking away. The authority for me and Mike, so okay, pre-existing network. You know, created in force two thousand fifteen, but then Andy said that's a liability on me and Mike. So ultimately, it's gonna come to the board. Cause your guys, they're the ones that can waive the standards.
Yeah.
But can't the standards be articulated, like, like, not just relying on, Mike says, oh, I think I can turn around here. Um, what does it actually take to turn around contemporary mercy?
Yeah, I think the road standards aren't reflective of all that sometimes, I also think, you know, that. This, these are policy choices the town needs to make, do you wanna buy equipment that matches? The roads that you have, or do you wanna make the roads match the equipment fundamentally, also you have to ask.
That's gonna be something Mike Bender's gonna hear about during War Committee.
Great, but Mike's doing awesome, I'm not, there's.
Quite a, quite a few, um, you know, there's been change, some changes, not a lot, nine. Nine times out of ten, his letters are. Compliant with the driveway standards, as long as you have fourteen five clear and width. And the term, that's not real, really sharp. You know, although with what driveway standards, that's the sort two or less ones.
I feel like he's been really helpful.
He has.
But he has, I mean, I think, I think that's been a real beneficial.
Yep.
Process, having him involved in that and going out there and riding down these roads and hearing.
Yep.
You know, with clients, you know, about what, you know, what, what's the issue here, how, how do we address it, you know? Why, why is it an issue?
Exactly.
You know, and I, I think that's a, I think that's a very informative process, informative and productive process.
Yep.
Here in the town.
Yeah, and I think something like that in conjunction with understanding, you know, modern, you know, life safety. Needs and, you know, how do you balance that out with the way that you want road standards to be in your community, like, is it, is it? That's why I was saying, the conversation is multifaceted and we need to kind of bring it all together.
I mean, I've watched the fire trucks go down my, all the way down my lane, and that's. That seemed like much more generous than what we looked at last week, and. They had a really hard time turning that truck around and getting it back out of that lane, and I, so it, it takes a lot.
Yeah.
On the other hand, the trash truck drives down and backs up that whole lane every week, like, some of those poor people.
Right.
So they pick up people's trash and they can't bring up the top of the hill.
So we had that subdivision in the northeast harbor and it was, you know, you could see to one end of the other in there. You know, is it wide enough to fit two cars down, but you can see, I mean, as you turn in, if somebody else is. On the road, it wasn't long enough to, like, just don't pull out at the time that you see someone else is on the road.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's my road, that's.
It's a complicated thing.
Yeah, there's, it's always a different situation.
Yep.
Like that at the end.
Yeah.
Well, you mean, not the main road. That's heavy tail, yeah, I'm not talking about that one, but.
All right. So subdivisions. Uh, do you wanna follow up with that sort of breakdown, okay, now we're gonna focus on this and we're gonna focus on that.
Yep.
Yeah.
How far we get before the deadlines.
Yeah, so we, you gotta, we gotta think about when, we gotta do this, because if this is gonna happen this year. We're at the end of December right now, we don't have much time to meet, to discuss these changes or anything, because we gotta start thinking about. Beginning of February.
Yep.
Can we fit?
I'm gonna work on some timelines. I mean, again, my thoughts, I understand the subdivision ordinance is kind of crummy and we need to redo it, but we also don't wanna just do it and then have it be. Another crummy, so work on it and make it what you want. So my next thing is, I have been working on applications, so this is a draft. Of the conditional use permit application, and I don't know if it actually. Works for you guys, so before we get too far into it, like, using this model. For other conditional use permits, for other applications, I just wanted to kind of go over the format and see everything.
Can I see one?
Oh, yes. And so maybe um, you wanna stew on it and use it if you have a conditional use application before you. And see if it kind of works and if it doesn't work, and then we can easily make. Um, change that I find. If I were on the planning board, this is what I would want you to do, if I were, if I were advising you as your planner.
Okay.
I would say it's not, it's pretty cumbersome to have. An application form that has all the standards in it, and you should just say, these are the sections. And then you, or the board member and applicant, to actually look through the ordinance and say, hey, we need to read these standards together. So that is the reason why I didn't include the standards or wording of the whole ordinance in this draft.
This is the checklist for the whole.
Yep.
Is this a short or?
This is just, I think, the regular. So I would actually take this. You know, some similar form and use that as the, like, the thing that gives me to go through.
That's good.
But you brought through a lot more than I have, so.
I mean, in the context of the long form con. Review, I mean, that's, that's great.
Yep.
You know.
And then I would say the, the short form, I would just use your short forms or using the sections. Make it, make something that looks like this.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Yep.
Uh, section five, nine, and six C F O, I guess we just hit not, not applicable on all of these. The section is not applicable.
Yep, so you think it would, should it be like, you could have one thing above, it says just, like, a note, it says this whole section is.
It almost seems like if you're checking through it all, it almost means, oh, I need to look. It makes it look like. What if some of it isn't applicable, what you have to check it, you can get the start and be.
Yep.
Section not applicable, yeah.
And then in the context and the review process, I mean, you'd have this, you'd have your ordinance and you'd have the application and.
Yep, and then if you had a. A copy in like a format that if you're typing out notes for. A, a decision, then you mean you could have handwritten notes, obviously, this isn't, this isn't gonna give you enough, like, sometimes to do, but you could. Type it out in the form, it actually allow you to. You know, type it so that your notice of decision, you know, something quite a bit like this too.
So I, I've often wondered about that, like, as we're going through and the chairs. Writing notes and checking things off and then, you know, we get to the final vote and there's words. Passing it around and signing it, you know. What's the role of that document then, when? In the decision process, when, you know, like with, you know, um. You know, I just thinking that then when we get the final findings and everything and all that, like.
Are the record?
It's part of the record, but is that? The final findings are really the decision.
Yep.
On it.
Yes. So then the thing at the end is basically what you've approved and it's.
Yeah.
So, so that for like a conditional use, this should be the thing that the applicant gets back, it's all filled out and.
Yeah.
And goes into the record.
It seems to me like there are also a number of. Sections that it twists my brain that it says. Standards met or not met, not applicable, like, say fences, somebody could plan on having a, a fence that's over six feet. And they get to the section of fences, the standards not met. But not getting rejected, like, they're taught, there are a lot, a bunch of stuff that we go through and, and that's why they're there and we discuss them and it. Doesn't need the standard, but that's why we're reviewing it, and then you're left with a check of, does it need it or not need it, and like, well. No, it doesn't need it, but they're here and we're accepting, on what?
Yep.
Because we never checked not met, we checked it's met, even though it specifically is not met.
So I've done it, but what are we trying to, do you think that we should make a?
Is there, like, I guess I, I have to go through, like, when, when that seems to happen, but there are certain spots where the.
There's a condition to it.
Yeah, I guess there's a condition or something, so that it's not, it's not always met or not met, it's. There needs to be like a third section of like, did not meet, but is being accepted, but the conditions that are, are accepted. Or something, you know, so that it's, it's not.
Well, that, so you would check met and then, and the finding effects and now she said with conditions, and then.
But it's very specifically not met, like, if you read that the standard is, they have not met the standard. So we've created the conditions.
Yeah, but we're reviewing everything in, in the context of the affirmative.
Yeah.
So.
It just twists my brain, because I also think, well, no, it didn't meet the standard, but we're accepting it, so we have to say met, but that's actually not true, it's not met, but.
Can you give me an example of how you can go through something and not be a standard, then have you accepted?
Oh, like she said, fences.
Fences are what.
Under fences, that say co enforcement, and then it, and it gives you a list of stuff that, like, no more than. Six feet in height, you know, meets the, it has a six foot setback in the end of the road or the right of way. You know, that type of stuff, and twenty percent vegetation, and then it says that if it does not meet that, then you gotta go to planning board.
Right.
And so that's. But it doesn't really go to any planning board specifications, it's just saying, you gotta go to planning board. Six B six, which is.
So then we go through this and we get to six B six, and then we, we are driven to check the met, well, they wouldn't be here if. We, if it met the standard, they are specifically here because they don't need the standard.
Cause there's an exception.
And we just. Yeah, and I just, it's. Do you wanna have it say, met or waived? Met waived, not waived.
I would say it meets the stand, you're approving it. By approving it, it meets the standards and then u- under the findings of fact, you would know why.
Yeah, the condition.
So it's going to be the section six B whatever.
And you gotta say findings of fact and the review with. Like, if you've been approved, didn't meet the stand.
It's your creating the standard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not in my brain. So I understand it's the way.
Are there standards that you need to add to the land use ordinance that allow, that you're actually reviewing?
This checklist address addresses the individual section. Conditions and then in the overall permit conditions as well.
Yep. And so, at the end, yeah. So actually, what I just was writing down, do you wanna have a, um, cause it might be helpful to say, as you're going through each thing, instead of. You know, findings of fact slash notes, maybe we add a line that just says, you know, conditions, so that at least you're.
Yeah.
You know, as you're going through it, you're writing down, oh, yeah, we have a condition for.
Right.
You know, under this standard.
I think we could list out the things that people specific, like, if they have too much fill. Uh, they come and review if they have to, to tell us those, those things that are, they're coming to us because they are not meeting the standard. And, and there are a few things in this list that. It's not all of it, there are just a few of them, that they come to us all the time, because they are not meeting the standard.
Yeah. I understand.
And that's why they're in front of us, so, so it just tricks me to say, yes, the standard's met, like, what if the standard was not, they wouldn't be here.
But I think, yeah, again, this is for you to, to.
Yeah, I know, I definitely.
Put it under that lens, at least if I understand where you're going, I'm just saying, if you put it under a different lens, I can. The reason they're here is to get approval that they've met the fence standard, and you're telling them that they have, so yes, they've met the standard. By, by the application material that they provided, we determine that they need. They appropriate, whatever it is, I don't know what section it is, I have to work, but I get where you're saying, I'll take another book in.
This would be a checklist, this is what we'd be using, I take this up then. Um, our current one has a finding effect and conclusion of law at the end of each section, which he says, and Hannah, how are we? What are you thinking? I guess it doesn't need to be in there. Oh, that was created by the attorney because we get rebounds, because the board weren't, was not doing findings or facts and conclusions of laws. And then when it goes to court, you have to have that.
Can you do the, the findings, finding, findings of fact, findings of fact, findings of fact, and then give it, end of, end of section, do the conclusion? Well.
Yeah, I can.
So there's just one.
That's why the, those checklists are so long, which says no finding of facts, findings of fact. And notes, but now a conclusion is ultimately, why are you making that decision? Under that conclusion by the facts.
Yep. Definitely.
Well, there's a conclusion of, yeah, at the conclusion is. Five point nine standards will maintain safe, safe and healthy conditions, that's the conclusion that you're making.
And they bought it, they gotta bought on everyone instead.
Yeah.
You don't do that anymore?
Yeah, we do, well, we don't.
I hate to say that, I don't think this is gonna make your process. I think to say that, I don't think this is gonna make your process any more streamlined, like you literally have to go through each standard.
It's just a format.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just, I don't like the.
The greater clarity you have about the format, the better the process.
I personally, I think it's really difficult to read the. The current version that has the actual standard in it and it makes it. Hard to keep consistent with the dynamic nature of the ordinance and you shouldn't be looking at the application. When you're reviewing a a project, you should be looking at the ordinance. So don't put this, don't put the language. Of the ordinance in your checklist, put it in your ordinance and then use the checklist as a guide.
So you have the three things, so.
You've gotta have the ordinance open, you should all be looking at the words in the ordinance, not the words on the application, cause they're not always the same.
Hmm.
That's the big thing. All right, does anybody care?
No, I've got a question.
We've got.
John wants to join.
Oh, yeah, I just had a question about the agenda. Uh, with reference to L D two thousand and three, yes. And and did you have that discussion and I missed it?
No.
You haven't reached it yet.
You haven't gotten it yet.
Is, well, he gave us a handout, is that what you, did you get one of those?
Of the affordable housing density bonus. It was.
That part of it. That part of it. Yeah. Yes, well, here's the next thing to I wanted to talk about, which is here's what is sort of in the works for other usual changes. Uh, if you haven't looked at L D two thousand and three yet, you really need to because it's gonna change some things, not a lot of things in the ordinance, but essentially. What L D two thousand and three does is establishes three things that we need to think about as a town, one is the. Affordable housing density bonus, which we already went over. The other one is that it requires um multiple dwelling units be allowed on every lot, so there's no single family zoning. And then it also requires accessory dwelling units to be allowed on every lot. Most of those we already deal, so we're not gonna, it's not like substantive changes to the ordinance this year, but we do need to clarify. Uh, a few things related to multiple dwelling units on a lot. Um, including going, if you looked at the ordinance. Um, there is a section, you know, under the section three point four. Where it says dwelling multiple in the last uses table. Um, you know, does that multi family dwellings or what do we mean by that? So we're just trying to clarify. Some of those things, we're also gonna clarify that. With accessory dwelling units. It doesn't, you can be a nonconforming lot and still have an accessory dwelling unit, number one, and number two. If you have a duplex, that doesn't give you get two accessory dwelling units, that's essentially. What you, what you get, which isn't quite clear in the ordinance yet.
Do you think that L D, what is it, L D?
Two thousand.
L D two thousand and three is gonna kick more non land division applications into the. The subdivision review process? Or is it gonna help streamline that review process outside of the subdivision into something like site plan?
Um, I think it depends on the town. So the purpose to me of L D two thousand and three was really to make sure that all the communities in Maine. Were not zoning out the opportunity to have more than one dwelling unit, so the single family zoning is no longer allowed, we can't have zone, we allow. One house per lot. But what they didn't do is change any of the dimension, they don't require any dimensional standards, so like we don't have to. They don't have any specifications on, you know, setbacks or um. Block coverage or lot area. Um, but what they do say is that if you have. Um, if you're allowing. Two structures or three structures on a lot, each. Structure basically has to have the same requirement, so you can't say. Uh, but a dwelling unit number one is ten thousand square feet and dwelling unit number two is fifty thousand square feet, dwelling unit number three is sixty thousand square feet, they all have to be the same standards for each dwelling. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do you, do you think it's kind of fueled the importance of the separate site plan review process?
I don't know, I don't know. That's a good question, I think you'd need one anyway, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna be. More. Than you might normally. Yeah, see, in my desert, you already allow. Accessory dwelling units, I don't know how many applications you actually, that you get for accessory dwelling units per year, but I don't think it's a huge amount. And you already allow multi family dwelling units, you already allow duplexes.
Mm hmm.
Have a duplex. Um. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I didn't, when I was looking at it, I think making tweaks tweaks to the ordinance to be more compliant with this, the the most substantive change in town is gonna be. The density bonus for the workforce, for the affordable housing, because you're allowed up to.
Two point nine?
Yeah, two point five times the density, which is. You know. A lot, but that doesn't necessarily translate into you could actually develop two and a half times the density on a particular lot, given. No existing dimensional requirements, you know what I mean?
Mm hmm.
It's. Sorry, I tried to. I've really tried to figure ways to talk about it, the more I talk about it, the better I think I get at like. Explaining a little more clearly, but um. Yeah. I think that's a huge change for the density bonus, but it doesn't necessarily translate into a ton more development. But, yeah, you could use your recent example as a pretty good test case scenario and tell you what it could have been allowed on that property.
Hmm.
And so then, um, last time I heard, Kim was looking to make sure that this requires that all the shoreline be allowed to use accessory.
You can't, they won't.
Well.
Does not apply.
So I, no, you you can still have an accessory dwelling unit in the shoreline, but that doesn't mean that the the nonconforming, you still have to meet the dimensional standards for as if it were a different.
That's right, it still has to meet the dimensional requirements, cause there's no dimensional standards, I know what you said. They just want you to be able to allow up to more dwelling units, but they didn't put any setbacks or any middle lot size or anything like that, they just want towns to put that in their ordinances. But to allow it.
Right, there are a lot of towns in Maine that did not allow. Uh, multi family dwells in certain areas and this. For those towns is a big change.
How's it work now then, if you have a single family residence and in the shoreline zone and they wanna. They want a carriage house with a.
Yeah, the natural requirements for each dwelling unit.
For each dwelling unit.
Change, yeah.
And for it to qualify as a dwelling unit, then you have to have cooking facilities in it?
Yeah. It doesn't change. So that.
So like if you, if you're in one acre shorefront zoning with with single family residents, they want a carriage house. And they want that kitchen, then you've gotta have a s- a minimum of two acres and twice the minimum shorefrontage.
Yes, yeah.
You know.
I think. I don't know for sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if at some point in the future, the shoreline standards catch up to this for accessory dwelling units a little bit more.
So what happens with the historical homes then that that do have that accessory dwelling and the. And the kitchen ad in it, are they then?
Depends if they were permitted or when they were put in.
If they preexisted the land.
This is the ordinance, they get to keep them.
And they're still just legally existing.
And if they, and if they existed after the ordinance was existed. Was it an effect, then they're a preexisting nonconforming?
It'd be law, not use.
Yeah.
So it doesn't change.
Yeah.
A ton.
John had a question.
Well, I just.
Yeah.
Want to agree with the point you're making, Bill, I think that. Uh. With the standards being that strict. Um, that this is accessory dwelling, I mean. Really is the second principal residence for all practical purposes, what's an accessory two, it requires. Uh, double the acreage, double the shorefrontage, it's just another principal residence, it's part of that can say.
In the shoreline.
Yeah, why?
Okay, it's treated the same.
Yeah, why?
That's why I think he's probably gonna get a lot of pressure to change that a little bit more, but. I don't know, also like. Who knows, yeah. It's a good point.
Yeah, what's an accessory two at that point?
Right, right.
You know?
Yep. So it's still allowed, but.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So. If I'm understanding this right. If you've got a house on a lot. And in theory, you could divide the lot. For another dwelling. Then you can have an accessory. Essentially, without dividing it, you get to have an accessory unit.
You meet the minimum lot area.
Yeah, so it's basically instead of, instead of subdividing it, you get to just do it.
But if you divide the lot. Yeah, correct, but if you divide the lot, then you can have a principal and an accessory on each lot, if you meet the minimum lot.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But in shoreline zoning, it seems like L D two thousand.
Three.
Three. Is, is gonna be exclusionary because of the. The lot, the dimensional requirements.
Yep, yeah, shoreline zoning, they haven't caught up to it yet, or they're not got them from right now anyways.
Who who makes that determination to catch up to it?
That's a D E P.
That's a D E P thing?
Chapter.
It doesn't only.
Yeah.
My text statute.
Probably, well, it's a chapter one thousand change, I think, yeah.
That's interesting.
I think they'll get a little pressure.
I asked about it and I got a response.
Yep.
And they said it, cause I said, how does the. L D two thousand and three affect the shoreline zoning, I mean, wrote back and says it doesn't affect it at all.
Hmm.
All your.
I suspect there'll be certain pressure applied to see that it doesn't either.
Probably, but. I don't know. Yeah, I would so, I would get back to my land use.
I would bet that there's a high percentage.
We can already do a guesthouse. And you still have. The ability to put a subject system in for a guesthouse, what, it doesn't add. A burden to the lot by just making it a dwelling unit. Like you're not increasing the burden on that property, you're already burdening that property with. Septic and draw, you're just saying, well, no, now we're not gonna put a kitchen in, like that's. It doesn't make any sense to me. But.
Okay, so we're gonna schedule all the meetings?
Uh, yeah, you guys wanna know what else is going, so that's L D two thousand and three, those are changes that are happening. The other couple of things, we're, there's a whole list of land use changes that Kim and I have been working on, most of which will be drafted up. In several weeks.
I think the things we discussed last night.
We discussed last night, like, uh, we have to, we're talking about changing, um, or clarifying the. How many unregistered vehicles you can have on a lot. Um, there is that the um. Setback change coming your way or the, well, all the rest of the lots on the little Echo Lake. Um, which uh turns out is a manmade. Pond.
Little, little.
It's all seventy five foot setbacks, so that's a, that's a change.
I missed that one, seventy five?
But it's going from a hundred to seventy five.
Do we, and we still have in there the specific. Shorefront lots on bodies of water that have the hundred foot setbacks.
We did. Yeah, and so. That little Echo Lake will no longer be on that list.
Got it.
Uh, we're gonna talk, we're gonna have something that just clarifies the sanitary standards, um, so currently in the land use ordinance. Uh, the planning board is allowed to waive the requirement to connect to. Uh, public sewer if you're within two hundred feet, if the town requires you to connect. To the sewer system if you're within two hundred feet. According to the public sewer ordinance. But the land use ordinance says the town can, or the planning board can waive that standard and the land and the sewer ordinance says the select ordinance that we've got standard, so we're just making. In within land use. We didn't have to go through those applications, if anybody's ever come to you, pull them.
They have.
What else, we're gonna talk about, uh, we just need to clarify, um. Um, back to individual private campsites, which we didn't review last night, but. Uh, in the individual private campsites, there's provisions for recreational vehicles, but the definition of individual private campsites doesn't have recreation vehicles.
So ten.
Yeah.
Camping.
Verify that. Um. We're looking at uh changing some stuff for the nonconforming section, just to make it um. Clear that. The planning board, it reviews nonconformities based on water body setbacks and the C E O is the one that does it for the rest of the setbacks. Plus, I'm actually taking a review of the whole section to see if there's anything that we need to make a little more clear. So that might be a thing. Um. I think there's gonna be a warrant article that just deals with definitions that we didn't, that are terms that are in the ordinance that aren't defined, we have a bunch of definitions. Um.
Permitting. Uh.
Doc permitting, um.
Yeah, yeah, we have different dimensions in the ordinance, forming structures.
Yes. Just to clarify.
Change of that.
So the majority of them are clarifications. That we've been working on, and then, uh, last night, I think we had a good conversation about, um, you know. Uh, housing options and whether or not we wanna consider adding, um, some terms in the ordinance that are, um. Like similar to what Bar Harbor does for employee living quarters or shared accommodations and where and if we wanna do that. So that's like the start of the conversation probably wouldn't be a warrant article this year, cause I think we're gonna knock it in, knock it. Far enough into the conversation. Um, just things also kind of in the ether, um. The, uh. I know Climate to Thrive is working with the Sustainability Committee on different things related to, um, solar panel development, solar farms. So we're working on a solar ordinance. Um. What else? Hmm. That's it.
Just stop under co enforcement for. Us typical occupancy.
Yes, oh, yeah, to clarify.
The building code, which really isn't even a building code, it's kind of a reference code, but they call it the town, mom does a building code. And. If you haven't adopted new bank, you have no building code. So we have to repeal that and then add the stuff that's in that into the ordinance, which has a specific occupancy language. It also references the N F A on all life safety codes, which needs to go into that. Ordinance, land use only ordinance.
Fun stuff.
No.
Those are, I think, pretty straightforward, but. I mean, we had a lot more conversation about, uh, unregistered vehicles last night than we thought we were gonna have.
Now, of course, uh, the ordinance currently states you can have two unregistered. Or uninspected vehicles on your property. But you could ideally have more if you could hide them.
What that section said, yes, I remember that, so.
Any registered vehicles can you have?
That doesn't say that you can have it like you want, but it's just unexpected.
Yep.
Cause that becomes.
How many teenagers are?
Of all the towns, if that could happen, that question could actually happen in like here, it's this town. Somebody would flip that question around, we never would have thought we'd have to deal with it and ask something that will happen here.
Mm hmm.
Should I just Steve Smith ball?
Okay, that's all I had, unless you guys have any questions.
No, that was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So did you guys want to have another workshop, if you wanna schedule something on a regulation meeting, cause it's like I said, you know. We don't have a whole lot of time, but the subdivision, specifically, too long.
Do you know what the agenda for the tenth is looking like?
I got. I think I got two applications so far.
Yeah.
Maybe we do the Wednesday after the tenth.
Seventeen.
Hmm.
Well, as long as home is, there's a home's value, what they.
Yeah, seventeen.
Seventeenth.
Probably in Belfast.
Uh huh.
I don't, I don't think my brains can be ready yet on the third.
About like January eleventh?
Monday. That's not a good day for.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's so hard when we go from two meetings right in our.
I know, but just trying to figure out how to get it in there.
January eleven.
Sometimes that's, that has worked in the past.
What about the sixteen thirty?
Eighteenth.
Please, no Tuesdays or Thursdays.
No. No Monday, no Tuesday, no Thursday, nobody wants to meet on Friday.
No.
I, I know, I don't.
I don't. I mean, what?
Twenty six. What about? I will not on the twenty sixth, no.
What about, uh, just on the regular hearing of the twenty fourth? But.
That's kind of it goes, but I don't know, cause that won't give you much room to change that.
I mean, why don't we get it on, I mean.
So I mean, you want at least have one good thorough review. So you want at least have one good thorough review about you.
And the third is too soon?
Can I suggest?
I'm just kidding, yeah, I could do the third.
That deals with land use ordinances as as a whole and then. What we're gonna talk about. Next week, probably, we'll end up talking about, here's the schedule for public hearings and so we'll have to get into February.
I was kidding, the third would work.
I was gonna say, what's, what, what are you not gonna be ready for on the third? And Noel's the one who does it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thinking we're gonna.
On third, that. This room's available. That's at five?
Yeah. That feels like we get out early.
What day of the week is the third?
Uh, it's Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Alright.
And Kathy, due to Kathy's nature. She did actually send me an email and said, she's sorry, she didn't have the information available, but a hundred and twenty percent of the. Uh, what I would call the area median income is a hundred and eleven thousand, that's for a family, a median family income. Hundred and eleven thousand. So for Hancock, that's for Maine. For Hancock County, the median family income is eighty-six thousand, so a hundred and twenty percent is a hundred and three thousand.
What's it for the town of Mount Desert?
I don't know, we can figure that out, but I think that's. Measure. I don't think I would use, I'm not sure if I would use, man, I can't remember what we used. For maybe interest of the.
Anytime the housing trust always used to a hundred and twenty.
Uh, they they go up to a hundred and twenty percent of the. I think it's the area median income.
Yeah.
Like for the county.
Yeah.
Not, maybe they use the state.
No, I think it was, well, at least when I was doing it. Okay, so I just found out my power's back on for the first time.
I got, we got two things for you to sign.
Yeah, we'll decide. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting for Kim to say.
Yeah.
Room available on further.
Yeah. Meredith can sign her.
Oh, right.
You did that, Meredith was only.
Ran away too fast.
Yeah.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
I selected one in this one and the last one.
I'll have you watch the video.
So there's a break these plans. That thing in here where people can bring their animals and get baby shots.
That'd be fun.
That's fine.
I thought that wasn't the second.
Now we're on the third.
Okay, what time is it?
Uh, it's from like two to five thirty.
So why don't we just do it at six?
Let's Meredith.
Make it on January third at the regular meeting time.
At six?
Yeah. Doesn't that help for everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where are we starting? April five?
January third is six.
And are we doing anything also on the twenty-fourth?
Can we please just put land use. Review on the twenty-fourth?
Should I just sign in here?
Yes.
Usually you do that.
Let's not have, let's have the.
Or, so the twenty-fourth will be another workshop, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm just pencil that in, it could be more of a focus on.
I just made a big mistake. Wednesday on the third and then it would end on.
And we can't even continue it till January, cause this one was advertised, but not January third won't be.
Yes.
Continue it to January third at six P M.
Right, do we have a motion?
Second.
Yeah, right. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. There you go.
So now we get to go home.
Well.
So motion to continue, huh? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we need another motion or anything? No, and recording? Oh.
What about the? Was there a planning board application?
There could be.